Really mean, yeah, she means now.
Yes, in a little delay.
Okay, uh, welcome everybody to our Wednesday, March twenty seventh special meeting. Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so again, uh, first thing, uh, any correspondence? Okay, we're all good here? Alright, first thing on our agenda, everybody's talking about it in town, uh, consideration approval of purchasing Wells Fargo property. Um, we're not gonna make any motion, I think, but everybody saw the minutes from the first election, and I know Dan is here, so. Um, Dan, you wanna just kinda fill in everybody where you stand on it?
Sure, sure, so, um. Where have we get? Okay, so. This came around about a month or so ago when we found out Wells Fargo was closing. Um, you know, it's been talked about if we ever had that property, it might be a benefit to us. I contacted the company right away, Wells Fargo, trying to find out who the realtor was, what their plan was. I've actually talked to the realtor, um, found out they were gonna list it. And, uh, that's kind of what started this. Now, the reason I have been advocating for this, okay? There's many benefits, I think, to it long term. The main reason is if you look at the way Bethel has developed over the last, we'll say, ten fifteen years, right? There's been very little, um, of any thought given to what we could expand in town services, or what we might need long term as a town. And so that was the main part of it, because this property happens, we want very few properties that is really connected to. The library across the street from Municipal Center, like if we wanna do any kind of expansion, the library someday or anything like that, this could be a benefit to us. That was the number one reason that I looked at this. Um, as we move forward, we don't know what's gonna happen twenty, twenty years from now. But it sure makes a lot of sense to have that, those options for us. That was the number one piece. Um, of course, the parking is a benefit. So doing something to make sure we keep that parking is great. It does not in any way solve our parking issues, which I believe the issues. And we can fight that battle any way you want it. I mean, we can get nine more slots in the library by redesigning it. We can put parking over here at the Municipal Center, on the end of Municipal Center on the west side, and we have all kinds of options for that in plans. But having that parking right next to the library, you know, they've expressed, uh, a lot of support for this concept because they get to keep that parking along. Along that side there.
Long term, I'm sorry, who, who's? Oh, I agree, sorry.
Yeah, they're excited about. But parking, it just keeps coming back to parking. Parking is not the number one reason. It's a long-term vision for something we may need to sit down. Now, what do we do in the meantime? Number one, we can lease that building out. We could put a business there, uh, we can lease it out. We would lose, right now, we would lose twenty-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. Basically what they, basically what they are right now. We could have put a business in there and leased something, hold on to it long term. I mean, that is the plan. Uh, we could use it for stuff a lot sooner, whether it's maker space, uh, community service types of stuff, uh. Now, I've had all kinds of ideas being thrown at us, um, but we could do that. But the real benefit too is, we get to hold it. If we decide we wanna do something with it, we decide it's not gonna be something we wanna hold on to, now we also have a lot of control over what we put there. It's not, it's not just that a developer comes in and then we have to really negotiate when we don't have all parts, right? We have the opportunity now to work with the developer, uh, of our own and put what we want there. Could be all affordable housing, that's what they do down in, uh, Canaan right now, right? The town actually does all the development of affordable housing, because it's not getting, you know, two out of six units, you get all the units of four downtown. So those are, those are reasons I think that it's really important us to look at the long-term possibility to the town. Now, um, planning zoning did give a positive report last night, but it's important also this to like, talk about like what kind of they said, what their concerns were. Um, I think everybody felt like they wanted to get it to the voters. That was part of it, because they just, at the end of the day. Development's a huge issue in town, they wanna get to the voter. Uh, one of the, one of the, um, I think problems is that we don't have an exact plan. Well, it's kinda hard to see what the exact plan is, you know, twenty years from now. You know, the Planet Conservation Development actually talks about finding green space downtown. We could make some of that into green space. We could make that a, a green walkway through part of that and still keep the parking, and we have a lot of options. Um, one, um, one or two people outright wanted, they see the vision. Opportunity, but it was a mixed crowd. But the one thing I think everybody agreed on, they wanted to put it to the voter. So it, so it wasn't like they all just said, yes, we're gung ho, we approve it, but they felt like they wanted to go to the voter and had a lot, enough, um.
Dan, not to interrupt, but the minutes said, uh, Beth sent kind of under an email saying that it was a favorable.
Is a positive report.
And if I should say it was unanimous.
It was unanimous, hundred percent unanimous. I'm giving you color.
Oh.
To just say from the P, I think it's fair, just because I was at the meeting, that, you know, everybody has concerns. One is, what is our plan right now? Well, we don't exactly know twenty years where our plan is, but we know short term, we have a lot of options, whether we lease it out. Uh, listen, down the line, you know, we're gonna have our first opportunity to walk through it next week. If we find that, you know, it's gonna be too much to, to fix, or too much to get the vault out, or whatever. You know, we can talk about tearing it down someday, or getting it to a developer then and let them do what they want with it. So I think there's just, I think this is an opportunity for us to have options, especially keeping something downtown long term, because there's. There's been a lot of folks who've said like, we should have got the CVS property, or we should have bought the one, you know, over on the other side. Nicky, this is opportunities, because they're, yeah, they're long-term, fifty, hundred-year opportunities.
Well, there are a couple things, um, one is, I mean, they're, they're leasing it, which would be revenue, when we get revenue. And then there's everything else which wouldn't get revenue. So, and also, what you say is listing at one point two?
So they're listing it for one point four.
Okay.
Uh, our, our assessed value for taxes is one point two.
Right.
Uh, so we don't really have, you know, we, we have some ideas of where it might fall. We, with the board of selection, we said one point six.
Okay.
To give us room.
But at, but at the current rates and, and Brad, if you can answer this, what would the, I mean, what, what rate would you get for a mortgage? And what, and would you get a mortgage, or would you get half a mortgage, and how much would the monthly outlay be?
So, um, right now, I talked to our financial advisor on it. And the last couple, like, short-term notes that have happened have been in the three point six range. First twelve-month note, longer term have been lower. So three and a half, three point six percent, if we did a twelve-month. And on a twelve, to do a twelve-month, um, ban, ban of anticipation though. Um, the issuance cost of that's ten to fifteen grand. I know, uh, I spoke to somebody today, there's some local banks that do. Loans with much smaller closing costs in the same, uh, rate range, so we anticipate that, if we went that route. The other thing is, we have a lot of unknowns with our fund balance right now. Um, the Board of Ed High School HVAC improvements, which if that goes through, that was approved at a referendum in January of twenty twenty-three. We still don't have an answer from the state, uh, if we're gonna get approved as part of that.
Right.
Um, what the Board of Ed is, is hearing now is April, and that the state's putting more money into the program. So that's more likely that I guess we get it, but we still don't have that answer and won't till the earliest of April. But that's two point, up to two point four eight million, so just under two point five million dollars of fund balance. That we don't know if we're gonna spend and when we're gonna spend it.
Well, we committed it based on if the state gives us magic funds.
And we committed it with the thought we'd like to do it through fund balance. I think when it was approved, we had the ability to use any funds possible. Um, so that's a wild card with this. Um, this property's a wild card. This can get approved by the voters not to exceed one point six million dollars, and somebody can outbid us. Or, you know, like, um, so we don't know about that. And the other wildcard that is the next item on the agenda is the fire truck. So right now, like, when I look at what our fund balance is, our fund balance is really healthy. But it becomes unhealthy real quick, not unhealthy, because we won't dip below the eighteen percent. But we get down to that eighteen percent and below it real quick if the HVAC goes through. If this purchase goes through at one point four, is what I'm using, because of the list price, and a fire truck at one eight. Suddenly, based on my estimates, we're one point four, one point five million dollars under the eighteen percent.
So we just, just using the balance fund.
Just using the fund.
Right. Part of my, part of my other question is, um, are there any state grants incentives for towns to buy their own? You know, buy property in their town?
Um, every, every swap and something comes up, and there's no way to go this quickly.
Right.
Go buy for something.
Well, I just know what was available, because, you know, I, I watched the hearings and about the zoning and planning and zoning, and it seems like they, uh. I mean, there, there's something that you have in Housing Authority, can build in your town or something.
Well, that's, yeah, that's different. Housing Authority.
I know, but there's different aspects of it that are troubling that I didn't tell you. Any incentives to save?
And I know we're in there for one point five, one six in a hole to buy all three, but we still have COVID money.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of things we can do for the financing part of it, because I don't know that we can do it without borrowing some. We have Losip money, um, we have some COVID money. You know, I, I, I think it's doable that way. It's, listen, it's not, it's not the, uh, it's not the best timing, but these things kinda come along and then. You know, I remember with C, with CVS property, somebody said it was a hundred thousand dollars too much or something, and they said, no, we won't do it. You know, it's, it's really up to us long term to look at the vision. And if we don't, unless if the board doesn't build visions there, that's what it is. I get it. I, I just have to act on long term and say, where are we gonna be in twenty years? I know that, um, one of the, one of the biggest reasons I think people have supported me even being in this position was the development in town. There's no question about it. I do think that overall, there'll be a lot of people who are very much in favor of us at least trying to do something with this. And if at the end of the day, we decide to put something on it, it's our decision what we do.
So can I just run through, um, so this week, I spent a lot of time looking, talking to the chairman about what are the other sources of funds we have, right? So right now.
Did you run off more copies for everybody?
I do, I can handle it. So. Um, and I don't think it's pretty enough for either Dan and Mary. Uh, Dan, so right now, CNR has just over a million dollars unallocated. Uh, if the budget goes through as proposed, that number is going up by another million dollars July one. So the others, ARPA still has, so ARPA has one point seven million dollars unallocated. Right now, and that needs to all be allocated by the end of twenty, calendar year twenty-four. Uh, LOSIP, which is the Local Capital Improvement Program, has five hundred and eight thousand dollars currently. The Bethel allocation right now for next year is a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Uh, so that's available, but LOSIP has limited use on it. Um.
But I thought I read that, and I thought it, it said real estate.
Yeah.
Land acquisition is one of the options, which we, I confirmed with the state.
Okay.
I apologize, I'm just not following.
ARPA's on there, yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry. I gotta go back to my eleven by fourteen sheets.
Oh, I see.
Um, yeah, so all this, this whole bottom session that starts with, it says possible other funds to use. Starts with CNR, the two million, then talks about ARPA, LOSIP, and then I put in their borrowing costs if needed. And I did two million dollars, so I wanted to go on the higher end. Um, and I estimated interest in one year's eighty thousand, cost of doing the ban is another fifteen. So without paying any principal down, the one-year holding cost of borrowing two million dollars is roughly eighty to ninety-five. I went on the higher side. Just to give, um, so the flip side is, even if the Board of Ed project gets approved. We're probably, it's probably a two-year project to get all the work done. The, if the fire truck gets approved, we don't know when we're actually gonna spend that money. Um, and this, you know, this could get approved and we cannot spend it. It's, there's a lot of. I was talking to Nick before the meeting, and it's been a tough week, because there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of what is in our fund balance right now. Um, the biggest one being the Board of Ed project.
I think I'd like to hear from Bob, Mr. Freedom, since it involves borrowing money.
Yeah, short term.
I mean, I, I, that's all the blood, sweat and tears, I mean.
I get the opportunity.
Yeah.
I know you're gonna lighten us for.
Well, I don't know if it's any light.
No, it's gonna be big, I know, you thought about it all day.
It's gonna be something.
But I, I think of our role, Dan and the Board of Selectmen have given their view as to what the possibilities are. Those all sound reasonable on their face. So now our job, I think, is how do we pay for it?
Yeah.
And, and I think, right, the first step is what ones are available? And then secondly, what other big expenses are coming down on that? I mean, I'm assuming you have gotten to that part yet.
So, but we, there's two big ones that we, like, know of right now. We know we need to do something with the tennis courts. Um, right now, that's at like four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. As part of the budget process. The Board of Selectmen removed a hundred thousand dollars from the four sixty account going. We're gonna get you the hundred thousand, we know you need to spend it, we just don't wanna jump the mill rate calculation right now. So that's another hundred thousand. We know we need to replace big trucks every year. We know we've, from what we hear from Rachel. One of the big lawn mowers is on its way out, that's a hundred grand. You know, like, we haven't done a deep dive into the capital list, because. Other stuff keeps jumping ahead of it, but we know, like, this two million dollars in CNR. Could go in a heartbeat with just our needs.
For purchases, right.
Um, so that's, it's, it's a hard balance. And the ARPA is available right now, but we're in the last. Eight months, nine months of having ARPA to allocate.
And this, the works that you handed out just recently, uh, just now.
Yeah.
It's allocated all million seven of the remaining ARPA to kind of our, our spending needs.
It was identifying it as part of the pie.
Part of the pie.
We do know that we have other things.
A potential part of the pie.
Exactly. It's just, it's kinda having a.
We don't get back on that ARPA money.
But it's still, it's still important that we're more transparent with it of what we have, because I think we need to work together for our capital needs.
I, I need clarification on the, um, the CNR, because for, for some reason, I thought that the current amount before we funded it for millions already allocated. And that's why we wanted to know. None of this CNR is allocated.
So the unallocated balance right now, it was one point two million dollars.
Yeah, that's enough.
There's still a million dollars left between now and June thirtieth.
Unallocated?
Unallocated.
All prior.
From all prior years.
There's a million left, then there'll be another million.
Alright.
And the moving into the million was to try to meet some of the needs of the future years, which we've discussed, but a million's probably not enough if we wanna stay off the credit card and.
A million's never enough, Brad.
I know.
The, the numbers seem to be, and we're not done yet, and all the components of it, the numbers seem to be saying we're not gonna have any option but to do a short.
If all three.
Right, right, right.
Well, that's right. I, I think right now, we have to assume.
All three.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe that. And then looking at our capital need, things like competitive ports, where we've talked about using a little CNR, using ARPA, you know, some of these projects. Yeah, I think we're positioned for this, that you have to stop in short term.
And then when I look at the last capital plan that we all look to, a million six for the Stony Hill area, we know that's there. There's another number for the command vehicle. I know that's under discussion. Now we have under highway, two plus eight vehicles, both for two forty-five.
Yeah.
And I think we've identified those as, I don't know, urgent is the right label, but we're gonna have to do that.
Um, and not to jump in, could you, but Bobby did say, if we gave him. I think we're seventy-five thousand to, to rebody one of those cabin chassis to Peterbilt's, he would be okay for a couple more years. That was his testimony in, in his presentation, if everybody does remember. So it, it is a need, but I'm not sure how urgent it is, you know?
Well, not, but even one plus the seven five is still three twenty, you know?
And then we go down the capital plan for next year, next fiscal year being the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, right, starting July first. Again, I'm just assuming that this is people's best, best, best guess. Uh, I guess the first big thing is two point five ladder at Bethel Fire. Um, I'm assuming the one point six aerial for Stony Hill is just a duplicate.
It's a duplicate if we didn't mean that it wasn't bought in twenty-four.
And.
There's a couple of big ones in the highway.
Yeah, right, yeah, well, in, uh, building me.
Yeah.
We aggregate all these expenses that are primarily for many of which are for this bill. That's almost another million dollars.
Yep.
And do we have a sense, are those high urgency, high probability?
I don't know if they're, so like the roof of this building, sorry to jump in. I don't, I don't think they're ready to go. I think it's on there because. It very quickly could become a big issue. It's an issue that we have to deal with at some point, is my understanding, but it, a roof that's. I don't think they've touched this roof in, probably since they rid this building, we did this building like thirty years ago, or whatever it was, like. We're probably end of life of it, it just, at some point, we're gonna have to deal with it. Is it a fifty thousand dollar fix like we did at the schools at some point to get five more years? Maybe.
You know, as we met about that capital plan, I think we need to get a better idea. Uh, you know, I think that is a. I don't wanna say a want list, you know, it, it's, it's department head putting and say, this, hey, this, this could be. I'm not sure if the years are in concrete, but somehow we need to get a better handle on it.
If, if we are working on advertising that a little better, I mean, the, the truth of the matter is so many things we kicked down the road, you know, like the tennis court issue. Like that is clearly something that went way too long. Um, the, the coupla on this building. I mean, at some point, it needs replacement, it's gonna blow off. That's gonna be an insurance claim, so I'm okay with that right now, but. Yeah, well, they'll land on me, but the, um, yeah, it, we're definitely, we're definitely getting close to meeting a roof. I can't tell you that it's next year or the year after. You know, if we need to push it back another year, okay, but if we're gonna push it back five years, I would start to get concerned.
I just had a question about the building.
Yep.
Because, because my first thought is, yeah, buy it and lease it right away, but then I think, well, it's such an oddball building, it's, I don't think you'd be leasing in its current form. I, I can't imagine.
It's gonna cost you.
I don't even know how much monthly you could get for it, unless it was re, completely remodeled and.
Well, it's highest best use is a bank, and it's pretty unlikely.
Well, there, there is a liquor store option, because he's.
With a drive-through.
Yeah, there you go, the drive-up liquor store.
The highest best use is a bank right now, obviously.
Sure.
I don't think, um, I don't think a bank is gonna be, Jones is gonna get in here, because that's why.
It's on the mobile app.
It's changing.
Right, and that's why they're.
But, uh, I, listen, when we have our first walkthrough, and are able to really look at it, uh, we're gonna walk through on Tuesday.
But, but, um, and so how much could you even lease it?
Yeah.
I mean, let's say, lease it to a bank.
Don't know you, but remember.
That would be an interesting.
But I understand this too, that's, I'm not advocating for, for that primarily. I'm looking at long-term land. But I wanna, I wanna, I wanna lease it, I wanna get as much money out as.
That's why, that's all I was asking.
Um, I don't, there probably are a lot of different options, probably restaurant, cafe, I mean. Even in, even in talks with folks who have talked about developing or giving it to a developer. They say they would do something out front, try to keep the building, but, you know, whatever, how many residences behind it. You know, that, one of the things keeps getting thrown up, but I don't know what exactly the lease option would be.
Yeah, it's an interesting question.
It's on the market. Yeah, it's on the market.
Are there any bids?
Um, I know there's a lot of interest. Um, I talked to the realtor, he was like, asking if we had a letter of intent yet, because we're the most likely buyer. But I have no idea how many people have shown this. I know there is interest by developers.
Have we looked at, obviously, I don't, I probably can't say what the developers are, so we don't know.
No, I, I mean, I, I've, I've got a few who've talked to me.
Okay.
But, not that I can even.
Yeah, not to kill us, but if, if it's asking one point four, how did go through the board of selection for one six? So, so maybe just.
We, we spoke about it, and the reason that I advocated for that, and by the way, we talked about it during. Because we probably should have talked about it in executive session for pricing that day, but our strategy when I spoke with Brad was to go through and do a bigger number than what we thought it would be. Because you couldn't come in there with, you know, one point three, and then somebody bid one point three and a dollar, right? Like, whatever that number is going to be, I think we're gonna have to negotiate it, and then come back to the board of select and the board of finance for a group.
So does the, does, if, does the board of selectmen or you, um, think you'd go up to one six?
I don't believe that's where we should go. I'm not willing to put a number on it though.
Okay.
You know, you understand from a negotiating standpoint.
Yeah, I get it.
We, we would all have to talk about the actual deal in the executive session and decide whether it's good or not.
So you're saying it's gonna come back to the board of selectmen, as long as it's under the one six, you, the board of selectmen will speak about it again.
Right, we're approving, we're approving up to.
But you still have to approve the contract with sales.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's, come back, right, yeah, okay, yeah.
So, I have, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, Dan, the ARPA funds, you have to spend them by September or have the intention to spend them. What is the board of selectmen thinking about with the one point seven? What, what's your list, right? You have a capital list. What's your list, and what's your intentions of the one point seven?
So as a board of selectmen, we have not created that list yet. You know, in the past, the previous administration had a group of department heads that would get together and kind of talk about it. Um, my intention has been to kind of talk to the department heads, to get the board of selectmen back to them to talk about it. I mean, I know there are priorities that we, you know, should add. Um, originally, Parloa Park was a big part of this, you know, a huge number. They wanted to allocate Parloa. We've been trying to get a grant instead. I think that part of this, so would go to Parloa. Yeah, three hundred thousand or something, we probably wanna do the bathrooms, that there are, there are things we wanna do with that. Um, I think there are other things we've, that have been popping up, tennis courts. Um, I, I know that we've had some, um, talk about getting a bucket truck, a used bucket truck for our parks and, uh, I'm sorry, building maintenance folks. When they change the lights and stuff, instead of going up with these ladders, we get it something used. So there's all these little things that have come up, but we all have to bring it to the board of selectmen and talk about them. Um, you know, there's always opportunities like, uh, uh, was it Mitchell's Park? Talking about working within the bathrooms in. Right now, the users of Mitchell Park are talking about maybe doing something with the town, but they'll pay for it. Like the bathroom, but there are all kinds of these little things that are still floating around. And, um, you know, I, I haven't been one to say we should take the whole thing and load it on a fire truck. Yeah, it's a long-term capital asset that we're, should be in our capital plan. At the same time, there's a bunch of little capital things that really offset, uh, the, you know, the pain on the taxpayer and their needs of the town.
But you're willing to help with some of this.
Oh, yeah. Well, just like we've talked about, you know, we, we have a couple of things allocated for the board of education we'd like to work on, because we talked about that going into the budget.
Yeah.
Um, and there are things like the, uh, for the school, you know, the monitoring program for the middle school, to do all the, um. All the machinery, HVAC, all that.
Oh, yeah.
There's a different, few things like that.
Building management.
Um, yeah, there, there are things we've kind of got allocated, but I'm really open-minded to do capital things with that, that relieves the need to do it out of CNR.
Well, the, well, the reason I ask is, so.
Yeah.
Would the board of selectmen be willing, if, 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 look, it, it's our job to figure out how to pay for it, like Bob mentioned. But it's certainly our job to figure out where the money's gonna come from. If you said you had one point seven, is the board of selectmen that voted for these capital items. Would they be willing to put some of that money towards, or at least earmark it, so that we know that some things that are on the capital plan are, are gonna be paid for other than CNR?
So obviously, I can't speak for the entire board, but I can't, because obviously, we're, we're one of the three individual members. Um, I, I know, I know there's, there's a willingness to work together with the board of finance and work the best as a town. I can't say which things, obviously.
Yeah.
Which things we would run for without having a vote of the board.
Without discussing. Well, would you think, would you think it would be new ideas and new spending down the road? Or would it be all that money funneling into the things that we're all talking about?
I, I think right now, we're trying to do the things that matter right now, right? We have a year to allocate, uh, allocate the fund, right? So things like the tennis court, we were talking about trying to do something for the board of finance, or CNR, or do something from ARPA. But those are the kind of things I'd like to do, and it, it's nice, because they're capital items that the public sees. And that's what the original intent of, of the last administration was, and I kind of agree. I've been a little more, you know, directing it towards needs like, uh, capital needs, like fire, police, things like that.
Public safety.
Public safety, yeah, those are all, and those are all well within what the original intent with ARPA was. So I, yeah, I, I do think the board of selectmen is open to that, but I can't speak for them directly.
Bobby, jump in, you're.
I back.
I got, I think one question, and maybe just an observation, if you could, first question. Let's assume we get down to the eighteen percent in the fund balance.
Yeah.
What does, what's that fund balance reduce, uh, subject to the list, reduced by OPEB?
Uh, I don't know, Dan, because the OPEB is, I don't think it reduces it, it's just a liability that we have. I don't know if it. Unless that's changed recently, it's just, it's always been a listed liability.
Yeah, my, my thinking is if we need to do short-term borrowing and eventually roll into long-term borrowing, one of the things that I need to go with. Is our fund balance that OPEB.
Yeah.
Is that the utility thing? I'm sorry.
No, OPEB is other post-employee benefits.
Oh, okay.
So it's insurance for retired people.
Every day, every day.
Well, and, and we, our town, to Brad's point, cover, covers OPEB as just part of the general. Well, and, and we, our town, to Brad's point, cover, covers O P E D as just part of the general. Some other municipalities, like a typical pension plan, will set up a separate trust and fund that trust.
Yeah.
So when the rating agencies look to rate us for purposes of bond issuance, they'll look to our fund balance on its face value and then do some kind of like back, you know, back calculation. What is it when we take out O P E D?
I don't know, I'd have to pull that for what, uh, this is a liability, so that they were looking at.
Yeah.
Look, I think the rating agencies are doing cart wheels when they see we have a fund balance policy of eighteen percent. Um, other municipalities in our general jurisdiction are down in single digits, so there's a little bit.
Without a policy or under a policy.
Yeah, now, now, some of those are very affluent towns, yes, there's some to take, but I just want to just wonder, do we stay above ten percent with O P E D offset against the, yeah, sixteen million twenty nine?
So our O P E D liability as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three is almost fourteen million dollars. So, yeah, breaks the stuff.
And why is it not in the policy or talked about in the policy? Uh, you, they're okay with not having that in our policy?
So.
Cause it'll pay it.
It's the.
No, I get it, but still.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a factor in your rating, like our pensions are highly funded. They're not at a hundred percent, but they're, I think, high seventies, low nineties for the other one.
Yeah.
So it's a factor. So it's how funded are your pensions? You, what your O P E D liability is a factor. Um, but it's, it's also they're going to look at how you fund it. Like, we spend three hundred thousand dollars a year from our operating budget to fund our O P E D liabilities as we go. We've been paying as we go. Some of the huge O P E D liability of the thirteen, fourteen million, not almost fourteen million dollars, is the board of ed. And their liability is goofy because they don't offer post-retirement benefits. But their calculation is if a teacher retires and they were paying, they, they pay, they pay a hundred percent of the premium, but you can't increase it based on them being retired. So even though it, it may cost you three grand a month, but if a normal teacher's factor is two thousand, they pay two thousand. So it's that liability. But a lot of, I think, I don't know how it's worked with them, but if you look at like what the market does, if you have to pay a hundred percent of it, even at that higher rate, you might still be able to do better on the private market and you'll go that way. Um, but it's a reportable liability, right? So I don't know offhand what, what's that costing them in the year as part of their operating. Um, but I'm sure they're carrying, they're carrying part of that cost and they're operating like we are.
The takeaway is we're still positive.
Yeah.
We offset a hundred percent and that requires a lot of bad things to happen, like, you know, the, the sun crashing to the earth. So we're covering it half days ago, so that's all good. So nothing then just confirm our observation. But you're just back in the envelope. It looks like we have about five point eight million in available funding. That's four point four that is comprised of, uh, two of the C N R. That's unallocated plus the mill.
The difference between the team.
Yeah. One point seven, if we were to take all the ARPA.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's, you know, doable, undoable, but that's one point seven. It's seven hundred thousand roughly for most of.
Yeah. Yeah, so I wasn't doing the math, it's because I started doing my own math, but I assume your math is right. You're pretty good at these things.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, but that's, but that's why I listed out all the other funds, that even though this board has no control over Loosa, has no control over ARPA, hundred percent of control of C N R, there are just other funding options, right? The other thing I didn't list on here is I know we adjusted it by a hundred thousand dollars, the debt service fund. That still leaves five hundred thousand in the end. I don't want to have to dip into that. But if we had to in a year, you could take a hundred thousand of that to pay interest for a year on this loan. If you do that five times and pay no principal, you wasted five hundred thousand dollars and you still have a two million dollar liability. So, but that is part of the plan too, and it's something I'm keeping in my head. I didn't list it because that is also some of our, you don't want to give away everything that you can do to control your debt, right? Like, you know, but it is a factor.
Right, so if, if we got that four point four and to your point, we control only two million.
Yeah.
The board of selectmen controls the other.
Two point four.
Two point four, and then it looks like we have about one point four in fund balance. That'll get us down to the eighteen percent after funding the taxpayer stabilization. Right, I think that, that's us going to a town meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so that's where I get the five point eight.
Yeah, the other thing that's listed on here, not to cut you off, is if the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five gets approved as is, the three point four million dollar increase in expenses, eighteen percent of that is six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
So you have to add to your eighteen percent.
Yes, to maintain eighteen.
Which is why we've always kept that actual revenue.
Yeah.
Now I have to fund it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so if we think we have five point eight million, only some of which we control, and it's a two million dollar short, short-term that it has to go to long-term. To Brad, Brad's point, we have an inverted yield curve, which means it's more expensive to borrow short-term than long-term. Hopefully in the near future, it gets back to normal and we'll spend less on a long-term, but, but that then will mean adding somewhere in the vicinity, it's a similar note, three hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand a year to debt service expenses.
Yeah, cause if you do twenty years, it's a hundred thousand in principal, the rate's a little bit lower, so yeah, it'll be less than that.
So it seems to me what we need is, we need some, for us to be able to say hand on heart that we have the funds to, to buy these two things, and I think we have to assume we're going to buy these two because they're going to put it out to the public and they may say yes, but for us to put hand on heart that we can buy, that we have the funding to buy these, those two, those two properties, those two assets, as well as fund a good portion of these other items that covered on the bike, like which we think, no, it's going to happen, tennis court, the other stuff. I think we need a, I don't want to say commitment, but a promise from the board of selectmen that they will allocate, they'll, you know, they'll think about the whole package of what you have to do here financially and allocate some significant portion of ARPA and most of it to, to this long list.
The current list, right?
Yeah, because many other ones, I think there's.
We're going to have a big increase.
Well, it, well, you know, we have to, as a board, we might not have, we might not have the financing or they have to go out and borrow, which is, yeah, I, 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 I am, you know, not the most creative guy and when I finally come to something, I repeat.
No, we like that one.
We can afford to pay it. I was questioning whether we can afford to pay it with interest on top, accident being of the, the urgency.
Um, and Newtown did a twenty-year bond, they're triple A also. They went out for nine point two million dollars and their true issuance cost net of premium and everything was three point two. So it's still not like, between three six and three two is not a huge difference. It's not like that number's one and you go absolutely lock it up long-term. Cause if the feds start dropping the rate over the next six to twenty-four months, you probably don't want it locked up. You might want to pay more short-term and try to ride that, but that's conversations that we can have later on. It's, but it's, you don't know.
No, I'm not thinking of interest rate risk, which I don't think we want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have another selectman here. Brian, did you want to add something?
The only thing I would talk about and, and normally I would agree with it, but if we're earning four and a half per five, five percent on our money, and you can do a short-term note at three point six percent and hold out to your money, it's not the worst thing in the world. I mean, because you're still gaining that interest.
But we're using that revenue also in, in our calculations for.
Yeah, it's going to be built in. And, and there is a, your point, right? There is the rate arbitrage, but that doesn't offset as well the payment back of principal.
Okay, that's.
Right.
No, I, I understand that, but if it buys you some time, you know, if, if you got a three-year loan, you know, or you go for a bond, whatever you decide, I mean, it at least gives you some time. And, you know, on the bonds, it doesn't matter. On the loan, you could pay down the principal quicker and save on the interest.
Um, yeah, this might just be a question, I don't know, but so if you did a short-term loan and it's a very, it's three point something, right?
Yeah.
And then at the end of that term, could you not refinance it and have payable rates into a twenty-year?
Yeah, the rate could get worse too.
It could, but I don't think they're going to.
Yeah, so that's, so when we got off the credit card, it was ten point five million was our short-term borrowing. So what we did for a number of years with Bob and Bob is the ten point five, we rolled it for a year. And then the next time we paid down a million bucks, then we borrowed nine point five.
Right.
Went another year, paid off what, I don't have all the numbers memorized, but shrunk that number over time by not increasing new borrowing, not incurring new borrowing, and using our healthy fund balance and money that we had to get rid of all that. The last thing I want to do is go back to that. The hard part is between the schools and these two possible capital additions, you're hard pressed to spend six, it's like six million, five point six million dollars from fund balance in a twelve to twenty-four month period, depending on the timing of these things. And you don't necessarily want to be sitting on that much money above your fund balance, because their fund balance ratio would, we finished twenty twenty-three at twenty point four four percent. You know, if we had another two million dollars in there, you know, you're up like twenty-three percent. You know, so there is a balancing act of there, not holding so much of the taxpayers' money.
Right.
Yeah.
But to Bob's point, the un, the unknown is the ARPA, because we don't have trivia over that, so.
But I think we have, I feel comfortable enough that we have a, a commitment that we're going to try to make it go as far as again, if this was what the board of selectmen really want.
Right, but the number's important, so.
Yeah. Are you trying to get like five hundred for the fire and five hundred for the property? Would that make?
Oh, I'd say give him a bag of cats, we have enough, it's going to be bad.
My, my question goes to the walkthrough. Um, is this, is it a private walkthrough? Is it a, I don't want to say public.
It's, it's a, um, it's just us. Um, right now, we have, uh, I've, I've invited planning and filming, I've invited, uh, public works, um, building maintenance, controller, myself, friends of the rest we have, but you know, anybody who would want to look at the, 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 the property, the, uh, you know, what was the HVAC is, get a history of what's going on, because at the end of the day, you know, we're going to have, we don't want to blow the taxpayers' money on it. We have to negotiate.
Right, that, well, that's, that's my concern, is like, what if we get in there and you walk through it, you find there's another
Yeah.
five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars or something comes up unhidden that you guys didn't catch in a walkthrough and we've now purchased this.
Well, no, no, this is, we haven't, I mean, nothing says we have to purchase it.
Right.
Right? I mean, I'm just saying, nothing says that if it's a bad deal, we can't just say, no, it's not for us, and then a developer will do it.
Right, and even if you did, I mean, there, there's no way that's just going to be as is least. There's going to have to be some kind of, you know.
Built into their payment.
Yeah, we're going to do something to it. A good question. You know, there's been questions whether we'd have to remove the vault or if you can keep the vault. Now, I've seen restaurants that have their banks and they have the vault, you know? There's all kinds of opportunity, but we have to, we have to kind of be in a position of where we can do it. That's the, our part of this is we have to put some of the money aside.
I mean, you can't say build to suit, you know?
No, and the other, the other question is, you know, along the, along the line, you know, do we look at what it, if it's going to be a problem, do we look at what it will cost us to take it down? You know, because we ran in, you know, we looked at the P D, originally we thought it was going to be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, it was three hundred and forty because they found vermiculite, right? So we have to really do our homework going into this to see what the value.
You know, with the year it was built?
This one? No, I don't remember.
It was there when I was a kid.
Well, somebody that I ever told me, there used to be a, almost a big old Victorian there with a barn out back and before this, they used to have the baseball field or whatever out here, the whole, like, it was way, way.
As is curious because, you know, lead paint and asbestos, depending on the year it was built, and, you know, less likely.
Sure, and it is really, listen, it's a really cool building. I mean, I'm not saying we're Jones is going there and like wiping it off the map yet. You know, putting green space around it and some things like that, and green space is something we should be thinking about. Um, because again, that's part of our planning and conservation development plan.
Um, now to move this along, but someone does have this room at seven, I just don't want to, um, you know, so.
Well, let me, let's say what I'm saying. I mean, the most important thing is to, we, we can't do anything if we can't afford it.
That's a good policy.
Yeah, I mean, obviously it's a, it's a great opportunity and that's why I'm advocating so hard. At the end of the day, if it feel like it's not right for the taxpayers, then that's what the board has to say, and I understand that.
Nineteen sixty.
Okay, that's not too bad.
Just one more question. The, the amount that was approved by the board of selectmen, is that, would it keep perhaps some of the initial costs as well?
Hold it.
Yeah. Okay.
So someone will make a motion on that and then we'll move on. Uh, again, this motion is for the taxpayers. Um, it would be an advisory question on the, the, our, um, referendum coming up for our annual budget.
Correction, by the way, and ask for the town meeting first.
No, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
In this case of.
Town meeting could.
Yes.
Squash it.
What could squash it, right? Um, if, but then in anticipation of being a separate referendum, right, as an advisory question, is that correct?
Yeah, it'd be a separate, it'd be separate of the town meeting, it wouldn't be combined with anything else, it would be separate at a referendum.
And it would, and Melanie would have to write that motion. So what exactly would we vote on? Just send it to the town meeting or what are we voting on?
You would, you would, yeah, you would recommend the purchase, um, and send it, recommend to the town meeting or purchase, um, of the one point six.
Yeah.
Would you like to make that motion?
No, I just want to think, do you make this, or someone else make the motion?
You know, I, I'm, I'm not a big fan of it. I'm, I'm a fan of the opportunity, you know, and, and it's a time thing. There's other needs in this town, um, but if the board of selectmen is willing, um, to move this along, uh, you know, with other funds, then I would, I would probably support this to go to referendum. So, um.
I'll make, I'll make.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
I'd like to make a motion that this board of finance approves the request of the board of selectmen to appropriate one point five up to one point five million dollars. One point six, one point six, he's dyslexic.
I thought that was intentional.
Like, bring it down, bring it down.
Approve, to appropriate one point, up to one point six million dollars for the purchase of one fifty-nine Greenwood Act.
To go to the town meeting?
To go, to for the approval at the annual town meeting, and if passed, is there.
Second motion. So we have a motion second? I think we discussed it pretty deeply, so.
But I, I just want to, I see what the same mystery that you have, but I also understand that, I think if, if, like you said, we have that, we know where we stand with the ARPA, I think the people would, it's fair to have the people make that decision, so.
So any other discussion on that motion second? Let's take a vote. Everybody in favor? So you want to say an aye?
Aye. Saying, anybody against it?
No. So let's record show, it's, um, was it five to one?
Thank you. Um, let's move on, and I don't think the fire truck would be, um, uh, anything quick. Um, this is another thing that we've talked about a long time. This is obviously a need. I, I, I'm, you know, not a big fan of how we got here, but we're here. Um, and, uh, it's, I'm not sure even how the one eight came from, um, but Dan, can you add, um, did you see an invoice? Did you see an estimate from somebody?
Sure.
So where do we take it?
We should work, no.
We do.
We had, um, a stock truck put in front of us and we also knew, um, originally what they would do for a spec truck. Right? So they, if they spec out a truck long-term, it would take four years to get delivered. We knew there was going to be a guarantee increase over time, but looking at that, I think that was about just under one point seven. I get the two mixed up. Um.
It was one seventy.
One seventy, okay, there we go, one point seven, uh, seven eighty. Anyway, then they came, we, we talked about that, we really weren't so much in favor of doing a, a truck that way because the increase over four years, right? The increase over four years, right, we'd have to pick a huge number, and then. At that time, we'd have to, if we didn't have enough, we'd have to come back to the taxpayer, we thought it was a burden. Um, there was expressions on the board of selectmen that this was something that we wanted right away, like it was given to us, that this was a need right away. So we started looking at a stock truck. And they went back and they found a stock truck, which was, I believe, one point six something?
It was, it was under one point seven, and I I don't have that exact number, it was one, it was over one six, under one seven. Numbers when we're trying to buy something.
Because that, we knew we were not gonna get that truck, so it had to be. I have the exact number of one seventy for the truck that.
Yeah.
Stony Hill was gonna build and take delivery.
We know, we know the numbers that they expect out with one point seven eight.
Without escalation.
That's without escalation, I think, we have told them that, um, we would do a, and the motion was from board of selectmen. A used or a stock truck, not to exceed one point eight. And it does have to come back, you know, to the board of selectmen for final approval. Because what we're looking for them to do is find something that comes up on the line. And not go something that's fully specked out, that's gonna cost us more money down the line. That's, that's where the one point eight came from, it came from what they expect out now, what we know to be coming off the line. And it opens, and by the way, that's all in as well, so they may have to go look at a different brand, right now they're looking at Pierce. You know, they have favorable, you know, experiences, they could end up with one of the other companies. But we just felt like it's better at this point to pick up a price that we know was in there, um, now Brad has been looking at other trucks too. You wanna add into that?
So, um, I reached out to a couple of the fire districts, and a lot of the trucks that I've seen bought recently through Firematic that are aerials. Were bought through fire districts, so it's a little harder to get information from the fire districts. Then they called the town, they go, oh, that's the fire district, we don't know, or they won't tell me. Um, so then I reached out to Firematic, the authorized, uh, dealer for Pierce in this region. Said, I'd asked like a month ago at the meeting, can you get me a list of what I sold recently, what they paid? And the sales manager said, we don't feel comfortable giving you those numbers. Reach out to the individual departments, the only thing I will tell you is the ones they've seen lately, aerial seller, one point five to one point seven. So that number, it seems like the number is in that range.
And I talked to a few fire departments, and they bought the most recent trucks, it was two of them, and one was a Pierce. And in their contract, they negotiated with the board of selectmen, there was no escalation cost. So that is not a giving, you know, and and if everybody knows, it could be up to five percent.
Right.
It could be two, three hundred thousand if you wait for a truck for three years.
Paper, no policies.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, so you feel comfortable with the one eight, and let's see what we can get.
So from the board of finances perspective, are you, are you saying that? We should go back to the drawing board and see if they do guarantee a surprise, that they could spec out something.
Well, I understand, it's, it's, okay, we have the truck, now they're gonna give you a contract before we buy the truck. And. As long as it doesn't exceed one point eight million, you're fine, well, great. And we're not gonna agree to that, so if you wanna be a customer of ours, if you wanna continue to put your enrollment in Stony Hill, we, you gotta get this line, you can cross it out. You know, that's basically what we're saying.
Yeah, towards John's point, you can find, you can have an escalation as long as the whole thing comes in below one point.
Right.
Call it what you want.
Right, yeah, those are the things, yeah, I think, you know, we we've asked them to look for new, instead of look for a stock, but. We did not go and say, just get something spec. But they just came over it, we didn't.
So can I go the other way? If they find a, a two thousand twenty-two, a nice truck, and it's one point six, is it a one point six five? Yeah, or do they spend the two hundred and and get different lighting?
No, it's, it's a, it's a one, if they find a used truck, it's a one point six.
And the contract, I would understand, if they find something, it still has to go back through the board of selectmen.
Sure.
Not a blank check for one point eight.
That's what.
No, it still has to go through.
So it has to go to you, and and if we're gonna put this out there because we need to have a referendum.
Yeah.
But you are saying the board of selectmen won't say, okay, yeah, go ahead, put those things higher, it's the price of it.
We we we, that's what we have voted on, we have voted on, that is the price, all in, we've talked about it, and we can't, we can't add to it.
No, no, I I'm saying if you buy it for one six, what happens with that two?
Right.
Well, that's, the board of selectmen, I don't think would support that, but that's.
Well, don't think it's supported, or or won't support.
I won't support it, I can't speak for the board of selectmen, if they find a used truck for one point six, I'm gonna be so happy.
Okay, yeah, it'll be.
Yeah, they did have a, they did find, it wasn't a, a twenty-two quid on the market around the time, but it went like that.
Right.
And yeah, probably wasn't a perk of one point six.
I'm saying, we don't need the one seven, if we vote here one seven, it's, it it could be a one, I'm sorry, a one eight, it could be a one seven.
Yeah, and so, so. Noticeful my respect is, the the whole reason we're looking at like a one point eight, and then the last with with the bidding for. Uh, a building is, we have to set kind of a max.
You gotta.
And then, and then, yeah, because we don't wanna come back for a whole another referendum, a machine referendum.
It's not like.
But that doesn't mean we have to spend it.
No.
No.
That's all I'm asking.
One point six million, then two hundred thousand, like buy a domination.
We're just finishing up a board of finance meeting, please sit down, that's the most people we've had in the last three years. We're gonna run a little long here. Right, right, okay. Well, then I'm comfortable with it, so, um, does someone like to make a motion for the fire truck?
I'll make the motion for the fire truck, like to make a motion that, if you're setting this at the town meeting.
Yes.
Um, uh, recommendations to send to the town meeting, and that not to exceed one point eight million dollars. To purchase a ladder truck.
I will second your motion.
Thank you.
Excellent, and, uh, for discussion, can we, as the board of finance, pick how they are in the ballot? Or does the town maybe have to do that, the order?
I don't know the answer, there, there's, there's nothing that talks about the orders, on setting the agenda. That I know of, but one thing we do know differently than the past years is, we will handle all the agenda items. Uh, other than the actual budget, the budget will go last. And the reason that is, if you actually look at our charter.
Oh, really?
Our charter says, once the budget is approved, the meeting's automatically adjourned to the referendum.
Oh.
So we've been doing this kind of wrong in a sense.
But on the ballot, the way the ballot is gonna be, so is that a six thirty in the morning conversation?
Uh, we can certainly all talk about that, but there's nothing I know of that describes that. But the one thing I have seen, is I think it's very important to us and the taxpayers, that it is a separate thing.
Oh, hundred percent.
Than whatever else is on there.
It's gonna be voted on the merit, so.
Yeah.
What I would like to see, if we're gonna talk about it for a minute, is the, the, obviously, the budget, the working budget. And then the fire truck, and then the property.
Well, you heard the budget asked the last. I'll talk with town council.
Yes.
And I think, like Nick and I talked about that the other day, I think your reference is public safety over land rights.
I would think so.
Yeah.
And and by the way, I support, I do, hundred percent, public safety does rank first.
Excellent.
So it's moving to question. Be the all funding sources.
Yeah, we'll need that language in there. Yeah.
Excellent, all right.
I think that, that in the past, the language has always been to be determined by the board of finance.
Great.
Okay.
All right, so let me turn everybody's mind, all in favor on purchasing the fire truck on, sending it to town meeting, John second. All in favor, so you wanna say aye?
Aye.
David, you're all good?
Okay, excellent.
All right, so, um, so we need just one more quick thing to fund, I'm sorry, to to use our tax stabilization. Fund in the revenue side of it, is that correct? Everybody knows, we've talked about this for months, so.
Why doesn't it have an amount?
Well, we know it's five hundred thousand.
So that's, when we talked about the proposed no rate, all along it, including using five hundred thousand dollars from tax stabilization. It needs to be voted on at a town meeting, so I'm understanding it'll be one of the items before the budget at the town meeting. To actually approve the use of it, the town attorney wanted, the board of finance, even though you funded it, to vote to approve it.
To use it. I'd make a motion that we use the five hundred thousand to use it on the revenue side and bring it to a town meeting, is that, would be. For the tax stabilization.
For tax stabilization.
To the annual town meeting, the same town meeting.
Yes, but it has to be, yes, exactly, the annual time.
Right.
So if Mary could clean up that motion, I'll second.
Yeah, Mary.
All right, so I think we all know what we're doing there, we we funded and now we're using it, okay, so, all in favor, so you wanna say an aye?
Aye.
So before we make a motion to adjourn, I think it's just worth noting how uncomfortable Bob Menfried feels in front of all these Republicans.
Yeah.
We can save his soul. All right, I would accept the motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn, we have a second.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.